Board of Commissioner, or excuse me, the Bullock County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to welcome the media and visitors. I'd also like to remind everyone to silence their cell phones and other devices so that we may conduct the people's business without interruption. Commissioner Toby Connor, will you give the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let's pray. And Father Lord, thanks for the day that you've given us. Thanks for a place to come to and deal with this great county's business. And Father Lord, I ask you a special prayer on the sick and the suffering, Lord, that you may bring them around, bathe them back to where they were, and may they carry on the rest of their lives in glory for you. And Father, also, I can ask a special prayer for the ones overseas, our first responders, Lord, our county employees and the working men every day that makes this county go around. And Father Lord, lead us and guide us, help everything we do be in love with you. In God's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Mincy White, will you call the roll of the commissioners, please?
I, Venus Mincy White, President and Clerk of the Board of Commissioners of Bullock County, hereby call the roll for those on the governing body. All those present shall answer by saying aye. Chairman David Bennett.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Toby Connor.
Aye.
Commissioner Ray Mosley.
Aye.
Commissioner Anthony Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Nick Newkirk.
Commissioner Timmy Rushing.
And Commissioner Ray Davis. I've determined that we have all members of the Board of Commissioners present, therefore we have a quorum to conduct business for the good of the citizens of Bullock County. I now yield the floor back to you, Chairman.
Before I entertain a motion to approve the general agenda, do we have any discussion or modification desired by the county manager or the board? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a motion to approve the general agenda.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. So at this time, I'm going to go through and I'll read the items on the consent agenda. Oh, excuse me, I skipped one there. At this time, I'll recognize those citizens who have signed up to address the board. Once your name is called, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and make your comments. All speakers who are recognized will be allotted five minutes.
First, we have Jessica Salagi.
Good morning. I want to talk a little bit about something that I published regarding this board over the last week, stemming from the now-closed GBI investigation. It ain't illegal, might be a little unethical. I don't know if that's illegal, but I don't know what the hell is going on. Something doesn't smell right to me. Maybe he missed the classes on it, but once he was told, he ain't voted no more. The optics look bad. These are quotes made by commissioners during the GBI investigation earlier this year. Six out of seven commissioners said something along these lines. Six of you expressed concerns or referenced ethical issues related to the basis of the investigation, and you said it to a law enforcement officer who was investigating this county. Yet somehow, the public has become the villain. After listening to hours of interviews, I am absolutely astounded by the gaslighting and the radical declarations that have come from this board without having any of the specifics. While who knew what and when matters to some people, once the investigation became public, a lot more people had questions about the substance, and it isn't because they hate Commissioner Connor, or his brother, or any Connor-owned business. The general public had questions because you're spending their money. In a press release on August 21st, you said you cooperated fully with the investigation with, quote, "limited information about the exact nature." You then said you're thankful that the questions surrounding the matter have been put to rest. I fail to see how any of these questions were put to rest if you don't know the specifics of the investigation and the case file had not been provided to any of you. Why were you willing to accept that, quote, "no provable criminal intent was discovered without any explanation"? Is it because the investigation revealed that the county carried some of the blame? Six days into the investigation, employees told the GBI that the process had already been changed. They felt this was prudent to note to a criminal investigator. They also stated that they never sent over supporting documentation for invoices because no one ever asked. And therein lies the cultural problem that exists here. It doesn't matter if no one asked before. They're asking now, and asking questions should not be interpreted as a personal attack. Sometimes people ask questions because they don't understand. How many of you even knew that the GBI agent and the special prosecutor had trouble understanding the records that the county had in its possession? The supporting documentation was so lacking that after receiving copies, the GBI scheduled a follow-up interview to gain clarity. If they had questions after reviewing invoices and documentation, why is it so outrageous that the public did too? And while chalked up to human error, the investigation revealed that there were, in fact, discrepancies discovered. Why? Because there was no check by the department head and no check on the department heads by anybody else. To quote Commissioner Rushing, "It's as plain as the nose on your face." There was a breakdown in the process, but this has been yet, this has yet to be acknowledged by any of you. Why? Discrepancies, whether intentional or by mistake, should not be overlooked, nor should they be swept under the rug. But how dare anyone ask if this has happened with any other vendor or in any other department? Instead, the narrative continues, asking questions, asking for documents is utterly ridiculous. But is it, or is what you perceive as ridiculous merely a consequence of your actions?
Next, we have Keith Hamilton.
Keith Hamilton, 11111 Arcola Road, Brooklyn, 30415. Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to go back during the budget process. I had asked a public inquiry and never got the public closure on it. In the assessment, tax digest assessment from 2024 to 2025, the base digest grew by $607 million, which is phenomenal, over 15%. If it's legitimate, and I do understand, we've talked and communicated about how the assessor's office works and they work independently. My appeal to you, I had asked the question, how much of that was due to increased appraisals on existing improved properties? How much of that was due to new, newly-developed properties being added to the tax digest? So I did look around and dug around a little bit. Ms. King was very helpful about providing some information as well as the assessor's office. Basically, it broke down. 60% of that came from raising appraisals on existing properties, and about 40% came from newly-developed residential and commercial properties. That has been sustained for about the last three years, so that's great. And I know that we're in the middle of this flux, and I've supported you on maintaining the military rate, and let's work with the tax digest. And then I know I'm supporting FOST, and I encourage, I'm getting the word out as best I can, and I support you on that. Obviously, I personally will benefit as well as every property owner. What I want to ask you to do, or what I want to encourage you to do, or challenge you to do really, over the next period of time, you're always budgeting, always. It's not just this little retreat at one period and then we examine what numbers we have. But all through the course of expenditures through the fiscal year, you're watching how the budget unfolds, how well did we prepare for this, our expected expenses here, and so forth. I would encourage you to do two things as a result of it. When we come around to the next budget process, I'm on visit with y'all again, and we're going to chat and we're going to talk a lot about this. I suggest you do two things. First, scrap baseline budgeting. Baseline budgeting is just every department gets at least what they had before with some anticipated increase. That's problematic at every level of government. It needs to be on a needs-as-needed basis, which means some departments may get a decrease from year to year. And then the other thing is we need to look, I've supported y'all up to this point, I'm going to, we're going to get through this next couple-year transition. Hopefully, we'll be in the best shape for taxpayers that we've been in this county in a very, very long time. But that's also going to mean that there may have to be a hard look at how the budget grows each year, and it may mean that we need to contract the county back to more of the explicit constitutional duties. Some previous commissioners have gone out in the woods and have began supporting things over the years, and this has been a, you know, a 20, 30-year transition. It's not one thing at a time. But we need to get back and focus intently on what the constitutional purposes of the county government is, and then make sure that we keep our expenses and expenditures within some restraint. The budget doesn't need to be increased 15% every year. We need to figure out what that moderate number is somewhere, because the taxes, property taxes are becoming a burden for more and more of a part of our county, and with the projected growth, that tax digest is just going to continue to grow, and the appraisals are going to continue to get more burdensome. But I appreciate your time.
Good morning, Honorable Commissioners. My name is Lenora Harden, 4285 Banks Creek Church Road, Porter, Georgia. I'm here to represent the Banks Creek Church Road community from Rocket Ford to Ponorosa. We have been speaking with you all about our road conditions, and we would like to say we appreciate the gravel strips that have been put down in some of the bad places. And we continue our effort to get paved road there. So we would like for you all to, if there's any way to expedite this process, we would like to see you all allocate funds in the next fiscal year budget to start working on our road, and if possible, to combine that project with the road paving project that's already in our area. We would like you all to consider that as well. Perhaps there'd be some cost savings to the project by doing this in combination with the road project that's taking place in that area already, since there's already equipment there and resources. Thank you.
Mr. Roy Thompson.
I appreciate y'all listening to me this morning. I've got just a couple of things to say, and having set up there for 20 years, I appreciate the job that y'all are doing, but I want to address something this morning that's troubled me deeply since, I guess, yesterday is the first time I heard it, Mr. Ray Davis accused me, my company as far, and others, as far as being on the take. I want him in a minute, I'm not through, but to explain to me what on the take means and give you a little bit of history. I am 79 years old. I've owned Statesboro Floor Covering along with my family for a long time. I started working there when I was six years old, and the integrity of that business means it's of utmost importance to me. While serving as the chairman of the commission board, all this growth started, I never raised my hand at one time for these national companies. I think I had two ties to break, but not involving them, for these national companies to come in. In fact, I had shared with them. I said, "Y'all gonna come in, you're gonna destroy the livelihood for a lot of people, plumbers, brick masons, carpenters, painters, roofers, floor covering people." And I said, "How many people do you use locally?" And the answer was, "We bring in everybody that we've worked for, worked with for quite a number of years, and that's from all out of town." Sales taxes, they buy most of all their materials out of town. Bullock County benefits none. And I shared that with them. They didn't like it, but I shared it with them. And what I had shared with them is coming to fruition now. You look at everybody that I just called their name just a few minutes ago, their businesses, they're suffering greatly because they're here. I wanted to share that with you. I want to invite Mr. Davis now. Tell me what on the take is. According to the FBI report, and you called my name, along with some other people's names, or?
This is something that I was told. If I had have known I was being recorded, I certainly wouldn't have said it, but I said it, so I'm on it. Now, I've had a conversation with two other commissioners concerning this. Now, I'm not going to give this name up. If I give this name up, y'all might as well, if you want me to give it up, you might as well call Noel Brown.
I don't really care if you give up anything. Just tell me what on the take means.
I do not know. I didn't know I was being recorded. I certainly wouldn't have said it.
Okay, all right. Then, you know, I would invite you, or any of the commissioners, or anybody in Bullock County that would like to do a forensic audit on Roy Thompson. Please do so. I don't think you're going to find anything there. In fact, I probably have spent less than, I guess, in 23 years, $300 of the county's money, could be $100 either way, and that's when I was put through school. But it troubles me deeply to say that I, our company, is on the take. You know what that means? Bribery. And I can assure you, and I can assure these commissioners, we have never been bribed by any of them. I don't want to work for them. I don't want to see our tax dollars going out of Bullock County. I want them to stay right here. Now, and I know, I'm saying this, and I mean it, just like you said, we were on the take and didn't know what you're talking about? That's hard to swallow. So, but that's it, but if you, I ask you this, if you have any questions about Statesboro Floor Covering, Roy Thompson, his family, come to me, come to, like I said, the books are there. Go to the books for the Bullock County and see what I've spent of taxpayer dollars. You may learn something. That's all I have.
So moving on to our consent agenda, I'll read through these items and we'll discuss them at the end here. Number one, approve the minutes from Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. Number two, approve the executive session minutes from Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. Number three, approve the installation of underground power service for corporate hangars at the Statesboro Bullock County Airport by Bullock, or excuse me, by Georgia Power in the amount of $25,000. Number four, approve a fiscal year 2026 Motorola radio purchase from Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $39,891.03. Number five, approve a bid from Rockstar Graphics Incorporated for 2026 season basketball uniforms in the amount of $16,900. Number seven, approve the sole purchase and installation of a playground at Fletcher Park from PlaySouth Playground Creators in the amount of $248,302.36. Number seven, approve the painting and refurbishing of the Trio Slide project at Splash in the Borough by Slider New Service LLC in the amount of $138,916. Number eight, approve the purchase of a 2026 F-150 Supercab from Allen Vigil Ford Lincoln Government Sales in the amount of $47,647.46, and I'll specify it's for animal services. Number nine, approve the purchase of one 2026 Dodge Durango all-wheel-drive police pursuit vehicle from Allen J. Fleet Sales in the amount of $41,398 for the fire department. Excuse me. Number 10, approve the purchase of one 2026 Ford F-250 from Allen Vigil Ford Lincoln Government Sales in the amount of $54,463.69 for Parks and Recreation. Number 11, approve the purchase of one 2026 Ford Explorer 4x2 rear-wheel-drive from Allen Vigil Ford Lincoln Government Sales in the amount of $40,475.07 for Parks and Recreation. Number 12, approve the purchase of one 2026 Chevy Silverado 2500 HD Crew Cab Pickup in the amount of $72,378, and one 2026 Ford Maverick Super Crew Pickup in the amount of $35,543.60 for a total amount of $107,921.60 from Allen J. Fleet Sales for the Buildings and Facilities Department to be paid from the FY 2026 SPOLOST budget. Number 13, approve the purchase of one 2026 Chrysler Pacifica front-wheel-drive in the amount of $49,673, and one 2026 Chevy Express Passenger 3500 rear-wheel-drive van from Allen J. Fleet Sales, Georgia State Vehicle Contract, in the amount of $58,225.95 for a total of $107,898.95 for the Correctional Institute. Number 14, grant a 2026 alcoholic beverage renewal license for package retail beer and wine sales to certain establishments with a current 2025 license. And number 15, approve a resolution for the location of capital improvement project FY 25 CPEO5 roadway design batch one that includes the paving for County Road 357, or excuse me, 351 Grimshaw Road, County Road 1386 Grimshaw Lane, County Road 248 Prather Road, County Road 516 Florida Clark Road, County Road 874 Deer Run Road, County Road 875 Deer Run Lane, and County Road 873 Deer Run Court. The cost for this work will be funded by TSPLOST. We can approve these items collectively, or we can move any item to new business for further discussion. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to pull 12, 13, 15 out, please.
12, 13, and 15. Any other items? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion on this consent agenda with the exception of 12, 13, and 15.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to item number 12, new business. Approve the purchase of one 2026 Chevy Silverado 2500 Crew Cab Pickup and a 2026 Ford Maverick Super Crew Pickup for a total of $107,921.60 for Buildings and Facilities.
Good morning. Darryl Hopkins, Buildings and Facility Manager. I know you have several questions about the vehicles I entertain right now.
Yeah, on the Maverick.
Yes, sir.
Because I know you handle the building and maintenance and all that stuff. Is that going to be a vehicle that we pull in trailers with, or what's the purpose of that Maverick?
No, so that purpose of that Maverick would be on the custodial side of the department, and that is to haul supplies and be able to secure the supplies inside, and we're going to have a cap on that vehicle as well, so those items can be secured from theft and from the weather.
Okay, all right. That was it. That's all I had on that one.
All right.
Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 13. Approve the purchase of one 2026 Chrysler Pacifica four-wheel drive, or excuse me, front-wheel drive, and Chevy Express Passenger Van from J. Fleet Sales for a total of $107,898 for the Correctional Institute. Warden Tool, good morning, how are you?
Good morning. Robert Tool, Warden at the CI. We have requested some replacement vehicles for two inmate transport vans that have come to the end of their service life. Can I answer any questions you may have?
Can you explain why a minivan over a 15-passenger van? I know you get one of each, but can you just explain that?
Yes, sir. So we will be replacing two 15-passenger vans. We have requested one new 15-passenger van. We requested a minivan. We do a lot of local runs to dental offices, to eye doctors, every now and then to an ER for an inmate. Just makes better sense to transport one or two inmates in a minivan instead of a 15-passenger van. And it's easier to get around in these parking lots in a minivan as opposed to a 15-passenger van.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to number 15. I know you did this, just so you could hear me read all these roads again. Approve a resolution for the location of capital improvement project FY 25 CPEO5 roadway design batch one. Mr. Ron Nelson, good morning. How are you?
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to yield to County Attorney. I think he'll be able to give a better response.
Thank you, Ron. And I guess the question is, what is this about? Is that?
What's the, because I know we've already been spending money on it, so what's the purpose of resolution? I know this is the first one I've voted on, so I was just trying to clarify that.
It's basically checking the box on a condemnation, in case there has to be a condemnation. And the statute, it says that it shall be the duty of the condemning authority within 30 days from the date of the original approval and designation of said location as a highway to cause the location of said highway and said county to be advertised once a week for four consecutive weeks in the newspaper, et cetera, et cetera. And I really think, I can't, I don't have anything to support this other than my own intuition, I really think that originally was probably talking about a new road. I mean, I can understand, for example, when they put the bypass in, that road wasn't there. It was going through people's property, dividing property. In our case, we're, you know, paving a road that's been there for decades. We're not really changing the location of it, but nonetheless, the condom, if you have to do a condemnation, the petition is supposed to recite the date of the approval of the location. So that's why we do it. And GDOT does the same thing, I think, Ron, you probably.
Yes, sir.
Know that better than me, but on an existing road, if they're making a modification, they do the same thing.
That's correct, and it gives the public an opportunity to have those four weeks to come to our office and look at those plans, so they can better understand what the impacts look like.
Okay, so they have the plan, you'll be able to give them, or let them look at a set of plans in case.
Absolutely, yes, sir. The plans will be on file here if they can come by any point in time.
Appreciate it, Joe.
But it's really more of a formality, I would say. I mean, it's just, like I say, check the box in case we have to file a condemnation. We'll have that date that we can put in there that was the date of approval, so that's what it's about.
Appreciate it.
Any other discussion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Absolutely.
Mr. Atkins, being this is going to be paid for by TSPLOST, I own property on Prather Road, should I vote on this?
Well, if you want to recuse yourself, that would be fine, if you feel.
I would like to recuse myself.
Hearing no other discussion on this item, do we call for a motion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I believe that concludes our new business, and we'll move on to our commissioner and staff comments. Do I have any comments from the staff? How about the county manager down there? Nothing, okay. How about commissioner comments?
Mr. Chairman, it's always been a thing up here that anybody that's come and served on this board before, that he was always recognized. We have a young man here that's been here for way longer than I ever hoped to be up here, and Mr. Roy, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for the things that you've taught me, helped me get through this, never being persuaded, never trying to persuade me, but to always go where I felt was correct. I think you've been a leader in this county. I think you have served this county well. I know you have paid dearly for it, but I want to tell you this, from the bottom of my heart, I respect you, sir, and you are one of the greatest men that's ever walked in the face of Bullock County.
That's a lot to swallow at one time.
Y'all try to rehearse it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to echo Commissioner Tony, Mr. Tony, Toby, Sediment. I've always appreciated your leadership and will continue to appreciate your friendship. I've known you as being an honest man. Actually, I've known you a long time. I used to rake your daddy's yard, so I appreciate you coming and speaking your piece.
Mr. Roy, I'd like to say the same thing, and I'd like to tell you how sorry I am for what you've had to go through.
for what you've had to go through in the last six, eight months. Anything I can ever do, you let me know.
About silent redundant, just thank you, Mr. Thompson, for all you've done and continue to do, because you haven't stopped just because you left this office. You continue to help people in the community, and very appreciative, and thank you for just standing on integrity.
And I did talk with him, he is having his light show this year to support the food button, just to let everybody know, I know he don't get to punch it out anymore, but I'll do it for him.
I just will share my condolences for your loss of your wife. I can't imagine what that's like for you, and we've been praying for you. I'll also add that, you know, before I took office, I had the opportunity to sit down with Mr. Thompson, and he shared some insights with me that I think as a chairman, you just, you don't appreciate it till you're in here. Folks don't understand the demands and the responsibilities that come with this office. And I appreciate his words of encouragement and him taking that post-it note out, putting his phone number down on it and saying, "If you need anything, you give me a call." So not hearing any other commissioner comments. We are going to move into executive session, and as soon as I find my script here. I must now call for a motion to adjourn into executive session in accordance with the provisions of OCGA 50-14-21 and other applicable laws pursuant to the advice of County Attorney Jeff Akins for the purpose of discussing potential litigation. I will note that we will likely come back into session and take action after this executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all for coming out.
I know, I don't get too old at LeBaron.